Should we go ahead and get started? We can reconvene to open session. And Evelyn, if you'd start us with a roll call.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
Present.
President Wells.
Here. So I'll report out on our closed session from today, October 8, 2025. We received, the board received some information and no action was taken. So good evening and welcome to our October 2020, our October 8th, 2025 meeting of the Redwood City School Board. Buenos terros. Si requiere interpretación en español, por favor llama al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. Thank you for attending here or online. And the board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at the time that the item is being considered. And if the issue's not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communication agenda item. And then to speak, if you're attending the meeting in person, which I don't see anybody doing, you'd find a speaker's card at the entrance to the room, you'd fill it out and hand it to Evelyn. And if you're attending via Zoom, please complete the online speaker's card link from the agenda, or just raise your Zoom hand when the item comes up. And then to be fair to all our speakers, we limit public comments to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Does anyone have changes to the agenda? No changes? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move on to public comment. I know I have one for public comment. I think it's just one. Is that right, Evelyn? Looks like it.
Yes, just one.
I don't have a name.
Laura Ramirez.
Is that for both of them? That looked like that was for the superintendent one.
Oh, they're both for superintendent actually on here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's, we'll wait for the superintendent item to come up, which is probably the next one. No, 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 first, okay, then we're going to move on to the approval for the bond program consent items. We're going to approve this in one motion. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.
You guys.
Thanks, well. There are no action items. So now we'll move on to the discussion items and we'll do the superintendent search process. I'll call, call up Eric and Jackie. Yeah. Yeah, there's a button. It looks like a person. It's the right button. Yeah, perfect. And it was right, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Well, once again, we're delighted to be back with you and really welcome the opportunity to be working with you on this very, very important task, selecting your next superintendent. So good evening, Superintendent Baker, President Wells, and all you trustees. Nice to be here. So I'd like to call your attention to the document that hopefully you have. It starts out with open session. If you would pull that document out, we're going to be going through that document so that we can get all of the pieces of the search process nailed down this evening. So we're going to start, first of all, with just a review of what are some of the things that we need to be working with you so that we can get the search started. So one of the first things is finding out, do any of you have any questions about the process at all?
Probably, but not, not, not to start with. I'm sure as the evening goes on.
As we go on.
Continue to have questions, yeah.
You didn't have any ferocious wonderings last night before you got here. So we'll start out with the next thing on number two. We usually would like to find out if you have a liaison that you'd like us to designate, that you would designate for us to work with, and that would be mostly on just logistical kinds of things. So sometimes we just need a quick answer of something that isn't really a major question, but it's just a logistical concern. Do you want to designate someone? Sometimes it's the board president.
Yeah, is that a board member? That would be the liaison as opposed to Evelyn, who I know has actual some of the logistics. I mean, I'm happy to do it, but if somebody else felt like they wanted to do it, otherwise, I think I'll take it. I've gone, been doing it since from the beginning. It's me, board president.
You've got it. Okay, congratulations. So we'll be going, just dealing with kind of day-to-day things that we might need a quick answer on.
Absolutely.
Okay. Also, I'd like to check with Evelyn. Have you received everything from Serena Farrington prior to the meeting? All of the information that you need?
Yeah, she sent me a packet for tonight's board meeting along with a checklist to, in preparation for what happens after the meeting.
Okay, terrific. Glad to hear that. One of the other things that we'd like to have is which email address would be the best for us to contact trustees? Do you want your district email? Does anybody want anything other than that?
I think district email is fine, yeah. And I think one of the questions was whether they're on the website, and they are on our Meet the Trustees site, yeah.
Perfect. And would you be willing to give us your personal phone numbers?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. So Evelyn, you'll handle that? That would be great. Thank you so much. Okay, so one of the next things I want to ask you about is take a look at the next paper that you have, which is titled Educational Partners and Community Forum. So this is really an important piece for, for us. One of the things that's really important in a superintendent search is finding out, what do your stakeholders want to see in the next superintendent? What are those desired characteristics that people in your district want to, want us to look for as we go out and recruit people? So we have a list of just very, very generic groups that we generally work with, but we want to customize it so we make sure that we're getting all of the groups that you want us to contact. And I'll tell you what's been working much more successfully than it had in the past, and that's with the advent of Zoom meetings. We've been able to reach many, many stakeholder groups that are more willing to, to meet on a Zoom meeting. They can be home, especially, you know, your teachers, you're classified, they can be home in their bunny slippers, stirring dinner for their kids while they're on a Zoom meeting as well. So we found that we're able to do in-person meetings as well as utilizing Zoom meetings. And so we, we generally ask the people, what's the most practical for you? And we would be working with Evelyn on determining some of those things. So here's the list, and I'm just going to go down the list, and then I want you to add some other more specific stakeholder groups. So we will be talking with, obviously, all of you this evening during our meeting to find out what you're looking for in the next superintendent. We generally would talk to your current superintendent. Are you all okay with that? Superintendent Baker? Great, okay. And cabinet, meeting with cabinet? Cabinet? Everybody's okay? How about your district leaderships? So some districts have, you know, different layers of leadership. So do you have directors? Okay, we want us to meet with directors? Do you have coordinators?
Is that, is that a play? Do you want to answer that one?
Yeah. There are directors, there are coordinators, and of course, we do have our principals.
Right.
But is there a way that you can? I have classified coordinators and certificated coordinators.
Yes, yes.
Same with the directors? And is there a way to probably do that, do the directors and coordinators together?
Yes, if you want them together, that can be done, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean.
And then the principals by themselves.
Right, right. And so, just so that I understand, so you would have your classified directors and coordinators in one group, and you would have your certificated directors and coordinators in another group, and you'd have your principals in another group?
Right.
Got it? Okay, thank you. And then your classified staff. So we generally have a, a meeting where, and we, most of the time, we do this on Zoom because it's most, most effective. Any classified staff member who'd like to join a Zoom can do so, but then we generally also have a meeting with the representatives, so your labor partners. So do you want your district office staff as part of classified, or do you want them separate?
I think they could be part of classified staff.
Okay, okay. How about confidential staff?
How many staff members? It's only a handful.
They could be a group unto themselves, or they could join in with classified?
I would, my recommendation, put them in with classified.
Join them, yeah, join them. This is not like it's that large of a group.
Got it, okay. And the same with certificated staff? So we generally can divide them up as you would see best, but if we had all, you know, any elementary staff, middle school staff, you know, they can join us in a group. And then how about our certificated association executive board? They would meet together as a group with us, the officers, okay? And likewise, your classified association? And do you have CSEA? Do you have any other classified groups?
CSEA.
Okay, CSEA. Okay, good. And we generally like to meet with students. We usually ask that, for your recommendation, we usually work with the principals of your middle school, for example. What's your suggestion on that?
So with the schools, we have some K8s.
Right.
So if you could ask those schools that K8s do have the middle school, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then we do have two comprehensive middle schools.
Right, okay. And would we work with the principals to see how they could best manage that?
Please.
Perfect.
I remember a year or two ago, there was like a district-wide, like.
There was one that, first that Catherine did, and then if I'm not mistaken, Anna, you did a student voice group, didn't you? Right. But we have not, you know, kind of.
Cut that going, okay. That makes sense. Yeah, so then, yeah, check with the, the schools that have middle schools, the K8s or the K8s.
And then we can maybe find a way of coordinating that. So, okay, good. The next thing would be your parent partner groups. And so this is where we need some specificity. So which groups are your, your key groups? Would it be your, members of your school site councils, for example?
I mean, all our schools will have a school site council, so that's a good one to include.
Okay.
You know, our PTAs and PTOs are very active and engaged, but not all our schools have PTAs or PTOs. And so I'd want to make sure that we're really cognizant of that and, and ensuring that we're hearing from those schools as well, and, and do extra diligence to make sure we get the outreach there.
So for the schools that don't have either the PTA or a PTO, could we contact their principals and find out who their stakeholders are and maybe, you know, try to do some outreach?
So the best thing, I think, in that situation, what I have been doing last year and this year is meeting with each of those groups regularly, and then we call them our Bayside groups. And those meetings are done each month, and what I can do is make sure that Jorge Quintana and Michelle Ramon, they get those groups ready for you so that you can meet with them either as one large group, or you will take each one individually of those three, because it would be the Bayside schools, which are Taft, Garfield, and Hoover. And we would also include with that, and I see D-LAC and E-LAC is down here.
Right.
Two, we would also have that, them as a separate group.
Right.
Which would also include some of these parents, but not.
But not all of them.
That you're, that I'm speaking of at this point in time, just to get a really good sense. And this will all be done in Spanish.
Okay.
Good, thank you for that.
So both the Bayside group and of course the D-LACs will be done in Spanish, right?
No, I'm, I'm sorry?
Both the D-LAC group and the Bayside group, those two.
Have to be Spanish.
Yes.
Spanish, right.
I'm sorry.
MIT does not have a PTA either, right? So we need to get representation through.
Correct. So what Jorge will do is he will take the groups that we have been working with, and he'll make sure that they're included. He'll get Michelle Ramon to help out on that, because we have that all moving forward now.
What's going to be the best form factor for those meetings to have them be most inclusive? Like, is it going to be to have them be entirely in Spanish, is to have a translator present, or just like, I want to make sure we do the best job possible?
I would prefer not to have, you have somebody that speaks Spanish that can definitely go in that direction, as opposed to having an outside translator interpret back and forth.
Thank you.
That does not work for us. I should say us, because I'm included in that meeting.
Okay, so what other, are there other parent committees that you have? Any booster clubs, for example, or things of that nature?
One bit of subtlety you should be aware of is that one of our schools actually has two very different programs embedded on the same school site, and that's, that's Orion. So I'd, I'd want to make sure that you listen to the parent participation group and that you listen to the immersion group.
Perfect, thank you. Now, we don't have anybody who speaks Mandarin, so.
That's, that's, that's okay.
So you'll have an interpreter who could help?
It's not necessary.
Not necessary, okay. Perfect, thank you.
And I, I don't, I can't think off the top of my head other parent groups that are involved. There's the Education Foundation, I saw that listed separately, but.
There's the Education Foundation, there's the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, but I think everybody will get ahead. In the manner of which the selection is taken with the different groups here, I think, because members of the Superintendent's Advisory Council are also participating in these other groups.
There is a group called Redwood City Mandarin Immersion Scholars that's separate from either being a PTO or a school site council affiliated, just, you should be aware of them.
Would they be a standalone group, do you think?
It would have to be.
I guess it would have to be.
Yeah, it would have to be.
All right. Okay, um, let's go down. We talked about D-LAC and E-LAC. And how about chamber reps, business partners, city representatives, city council?
Any external facing people, that are groups you like.
Would you say that any partnerships that you have built in the years, that you would probably be able to give them their contact information?
I can, I can do that, the partnerships that we've had in, throughout these last 10 years, yeah, I can do that.
Well, if you could give the partnerships information to Evelyn, then we'll work with Evelyn and see if we have some groupings, like if there's city people and, you know, business partners, right? See if we can get them.
I'm sorry?
Together in a group.
Stanford Collaborative and Redwood City Together and.
Right.
Yeah, we've done a lot with Stanford. I think.
Stanford, and then we've done a lot with the chambers, so the.
Right, chamber people.
Redwood City Together.
And the county, to be.
The county, would we want to include them?
Probably not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're down to 14.
David, did you have? Hold on, it's like, David, did you have?
This is more a question for you guys, because I think it's a little bit of a different space. Is it typical, when you go through these, to have engagement through any of the charter schools, or any, any sort of representation there?
It's really up to the board.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. Yeah, sometimes the answer is yes, other times it's, it's no.
Depends on the relationship, I think, between the charter and the board.
They're dependent.
Reasonably positive, I would say. It's been productive.
I mean, we don't, we, we get along. It's not like in some school districts where you don't, or, I mean, they, they come to me when there's ever concern or an issue, or they go to Rick, and it's been very cordial. It's a possibility.
Yeah, although they are independent charters, they don't have much influence over our directions. We don't have much influence over their directions, other than making sure that they're compliant with the law. I don't know if the, the role of this, I actually think Rick does more, a lot of that, following the compliance part as well. So I think we'll have the continuity there, personally.
Okay, I think, well, I think at the very least, to the extent there's an open community forum, I'm sure there'll be lots of messaging out, but probably good just to make sure there's awareness across the board, even if it's not a standalone, just.
Well, and also, and we'll be talking about this a little later, yeah, we have a very extensive survey, and so, you know, that'll be publicized throughout your entire community. So hopefully, everyone, you know, who has an interest in the school district can give input through the survey. 14, the.
Yeah, 14, okay, go ahead.
The Ed Foundation?
Yeah.
Okay, so I assume they have officers and will be able to contact their officers. And then in terms of the open community forum, I'm going to be brutally honest, and Eric, you can, we, we hold them, we do hold them. I have to tell you, the attendance is beyond minimal. People just don't come out anymore.
I think, and this is not with this Jackie and I, but with all of our partners alone, I don't know if we've had 20 people show up, any of them in the last two, two years. Most are 10 or below or none. So it's not really a space.
Is it a bad look to not have one?
I, I agree.
They didn't even bother.
No, 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 yes, we totally agree. So I'll give you, I had just done Elk Grove School District, 68,000 students, fourth largest school district in California. How many people do you think came to the community forum? We had four interpreters, four different languages. It was the four interpreters and myself. We're not saying not to have it, I think we do have to have it, but I just want to warn you in advance that people are very reticent about coming out.
And the reality of it is, with technology, they're much more comfortable doing it in the Zoom. They're going to have at least two chances. One, they're probably a member of one of the groups that were listed here, or they're going to get the survey itself. And so there'll be plenty of opportunities for, for people to join. We do it because it's something we've done in the past. There were times where we would get quite a few, but in the last two to three years, it's really dwindled because people have other options to participate.
But we will be asking you, so assuming we're going to have an open community forum, you know, y'all come, where's the best place? Should we have it at one of your K8s? Should we have it at the middle school? Boardroom? What, what do you?
Yeah, I think the Hoover Gym is a good one for open community forums, although it's really tempting to want to offer it hybrid mode, which would, you know, because that might open people up to being able to come through.
We sometimes do both?
Do both, okay, yeah. So if you do an online one and you do, yeah, that, that'd be great.
Yeah, honestly, and I'm only kind of pre-warning you about this, because I've worked with boards that we didn't pre-warn, and they just felt so terrible that no one, or few people.
Fortunately, we just went through the facilities master plan process that had a bunch of community output meetings, input meetings, and they were reasonably well-attended, but you're talking about it in the twenties there. But the online one actually, I think, had like 45, 50, probably twice as many, so.
That's what we have found, yeah.
Sure. So we're not, we're not, we see, we see it.
The other, I'm sorry, go, please.
For all of these sessions, do we divvy this up, or how do?
Oh, I was just getting ready to jump in. You do not participate in any of those. It changes.
That you don't.
I'm going to be brutally honest, I'm the baby. Okay, so I really don't recommend it because it changes the tenor of the conversations. It really does. It'd be no different than, well, I won't give any examples, but it just changes the dynamic. And you want people to feel free and comfortable being able to express their opinions.
As much as you don't want to, you know, admit it, you have positional power. And if you were to be in one of the teacher's sessions, or the classified sessions, or whatever, people still may not feel quite as, as open and forthright if a member of the board was there. So we do recommend that you don't participate.
And then, you know, where you've gone through this list here, you know, we've got some amazingly, amazingly engaged community, but I just was curious, like, how do we ensure that, you know, the input sessions reach both the highly engaged and the, those who may not typically participate? I mean, part of it, I've heard a couple of mechanisms. There's the outreach, we're going to go out and do the outreach there. We talked about the Bayside schools and being able to get there, making things available to Zoom, and you have other mechanisms we'll talk about with the surveys. But are there other best practices we should be thinking about and pulling that in?
Well, I think one of the things that I have always found, and I think Eric will agree, you need, we need to get your principals really actively pushing through their robo-calls, through their parent square, through all of the mechanisms, because they're your, they're your boots on the ground. They touch their surrounding community, and they touch, of course, you know, all of their parents. I think being able to enlist your local newspapers, and especially getting the links out to the survey and things like that. So I think trustee Weekly was talking about, you know, well, what can we do? Well, one of the things that you can do is help us get the word out to all of these groups that you have. And if there are particular groups that you know you don't have a high representation, then, you know, let us know, and we'll try to work with either the principal who might be serving those people, or one of your, you know, coordinators or directors who, you know, specifically have some more information to help us get their, their voices heard.
I don't know if it's possible, but I have heard from a couple of the principals that if we want to send surveys out, like coming from them, or even the teachers directly, would get a higher response rate than if it was coming from like leadership associate.
Absolutely. I mean, that's why I said, you know, getting, getting the principals to be, you know, helping carry the water on this is really critical, because, and then also, of course, you know, we work with, like when we're going to meet with your SSC representatives, really work with them to try to get everybody that they know, all of our parent groups, try to get them to spread the word. So we really do try to get as many voices as we, as we possibly can heard. And you, I think you'll be very surprised at how many people take the survey. I'm always surprised at how high those numbers are, especially in this day and age when people are taking a lot of surveys. But people do want to really be able to give their input. I think what you'll find in our survey is that you're going to be able to not only get, you know, forced to answer questions, but then people are all, always able to give their own comments on every one of the questions. And that's very, very informative for you as board members, and people do like to be able to, to be able to give you their comments, and they know that you'll see all those results.
Sorry, actually, I have a broader question, and I may have maybe gotten ahead of myself or behind, but all of the discussion about the educational partners and community forum, these, all the information that we are trying to glean here is in the framework of this is going to inform the desired characteristics that we are looking for. Is that, is that correct?
That's a part of it. So we ask everyone the same three questions that you're going to be asked a little later on tonight's meeting. What are the desired characteristics? What do you, what do you think the next superintendent of this district needs to have? Skills, education, experience, whatever. But we also ask the second question, and that is, what do you see as the strengths of the district? And we use that as we recruit candidates. If there's a highly successful candidate in a really good district, why would they want to leave their job and come here? Well, we want to be able to, you know, shine the light on all the things that you folks have. So we use a lot of the information that we get from the strengths as we recruit candidates. And then the last thing, which is also very important, is what are the challenges that you see that are going to be facing the district in the next few years? Because the example that I always use, if you're, you know, building schools every other year, probably be good to have, you know, a superintendent who has a little bit of experience, you know, with facilities master planning, et cetera. So you want to be able to, and we need to be able to know, what are the challenges that are going to be facing the next superintendent? So when we start vetting our candidates, we see, well, does that person have what it's going to take to be successful? So we look at their experience in those particular areas that might be an area of need for you.
Got it. Okay, I think this might be going to the timeline, but it sounds like the plan or the thinking here is to have these discussions concurrently with the survey, so that you have multiple means of collecting the information?
Mm-hmm.
I guess, is there, has it, does it often occur that there's information that you glean because it's a live discussion to the community forums that makes sense to incorporate into the survey? Like something that we had not anticipated, being a very important thing to the community that isn't captured otherwise in those three big questions that we actually do want to disseminate through a survey?
That's not really how we have done it in the past. You know, it's important for us to triangulate the data. So we like to have, you know, the concurrent data using the same question format because then we're able to see where are the commonalities, but then we're also able to see where are those unique things? And then in our report that we give to you, we'll show you, you know, these are the areas that, common themes among, you know, everyone, whether it's your stakeholder groups, in-person sessions, or if it's on the survey. Here are the things that we found not, the, here are the things that were unique. Any other questions before we go on?
Any questions? Cecilia, Jen, David, or David?
Okay. So now we're back on our, you know, initial meeting discussion items and we are on five and bullet two. So after we take a lot of this information, we put together what's called a position description. And that's where we actually publicize what it is that the district in general is looking for in the next superintendent, because this is really important for the candidates, because as they look at your opening, they want to see, well, do I have what that district's looking for? Am I going to be a match for that district? Or does my experience not match what they need at this time? So that's one of the things that we do and we will, of course, send that out to you. But we also need for that, because there is a law that requires any posting to post a salary range. So we're going to be asking you what the salary range is for us to put on that position description. So I don't know if you want to have like a subcommittee talk about it or if you already have a salary range in mind. But I just want to let you know that at some point, we're going to need to ask you, what is the salary range that you want to advertise for this position?
Yeah, I think it would be, I mean, we obviously have our superintendent's contract and we know what the salary is for that. I think it would be helpful to understand what is, you know, how does that compare? What is competitive in the, in the market and be able to do that? And if it's a subcommittee that you think that makes the most sense or just a small working group, I would say, rather than a formal board subcommittee, then, then that seems pretty practical to me unless, if you don't need the answer right, right away.
No, we don't need the answer right away, but I do want to, you know, have it on your radar screen that you, we are going to need it at some point. So, yeah.
How tightly bound does the range need to be? Because I've seen that sometimes on applications like this might pay somewhere between a thousand a year and 10 million a year, right? So like, is there a degree that's appropriate of confidence?
Well, I would say it has to be moderately reasonable, but you're not, you don't, you're not tied to it. So let's say, for example, you have a superstar superintendent who has, you know, 10 years of experience in the best district in the nation, right? And, yes, other than yours. And he or she says to you, I would love to come to Redwood City, but you know, I need to have a little bit more. You, you're free to do that. It's just to give the candidate an idea.
Yeah. And typically it's between 30 and $40,000 because you're talking about, as Jeffy said, top-notch person who has tons of experience, who's coming from the district that has this salary versus someone who maybe coming from a smaller district. Still, it could be superintendent and this would be a bump in salary increase, but usually between 30 and $40,000 is kind of the range that we like to post.
And again, it's not, you're not tied to it. Yeah, you can always do more. So in addition to, you know, the salary range, one of the things that we're going to be asking you is, we always provide a blurb about your district. Now, usually your district has something on your website. Usually it's about us. So I will be working with Mike. I'll ask, you know, review that. Is that what you would like us to put in the position description? If not, if you'd like, you know, something else, just, just let us know.
And John, maybe we can get Jorge's help on crafting this as well. Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. Okay. And then we will send you the position description with the salary range once, if, well, when we have it. And that, of course, is going to be posted on your website as well as our website. And again, probably easiest to just work with the liaison. We'll send it to Mike. He can take a look at it. And if, you know, it meets his approval, then we'll go ahead with it.
Okay. And then I think Dr. Baker has a question.
Yes, please.
Jackie, I have a question regarding the salary. Have you taken into consideration salary ranges within San Mateo County? And do you have access to that information?
Yeah, we do. So you haven't been given it yet, but as Eric had mentioned earlier, we have the J20. So we have the state reporting. So of course it won't be current. It'll be from last year. And then we also can dig into the districts that are closest to you and that are your competitors, if you don't mind me using that, that word, but, and we look at other superintendent contracts. So we're able to give you an idea.
I have last year's comparison for all our soups.
If you get that to us, that'd be great.
As long as you don't.
No, I understand completely. Yes.
Because we're, we're a group, we.
Yes. Yeah. We actually used to do that in Santa Clara County, but they were, well, obviously they were some concern, so they, they don't do that anymore, but it's a great, great tool to have. Thank you. Okay. So the next thing and the last bullet on there is the online survey. We have the dates on the timeline and we're thinking of going out with the survey the week of the 13th and ending it on the 24th. So again, just trying to get out there as, as early as possible. And it'll be really important, again, for your principals to get that word out and all of you as well. But we've got to get, you know, got to get people knowing that the survey's there. Here's the link and they can take it. And the second thing is, what languages do you need us to have the survey in? Obviously Spanish, but what else?
Before we get to the languages on the timeline, do you think, is that enough time for the principals to be able to push it? I mean, the 13th is Monday.
13th is a holiday.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we should do the next week. This would be for the survey. So we're looking at that following week, not the week of the 13th, but the week of the 20th to be doing our stakeholder input. Maybe we'll, we'll start it that week then. So it would be the week of the 20th and the 27th.
Yeah. And not all our principals do weekly newsletters.
Right. So what, you will have the survey already and all they will need to do is push out the link, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you have like a blurb that goes with that link?
Yes.
And, and do we need to translate it or do you translate?
We have it.
Okay. Then we can get it probably out and I will just make, talk to Jorge, Jorge online. Yeah, he's on. So we will make sure that it all gets out there.
Perfect. Okay.
So maybe, maybe just a question though, is it less so about the starting time, but more about the duration? I guess that is, I guess, what, two, two weeks is what's proposed? Is that sufficient time? I guess really a little bit less than two weeks because Monday's a holiday in terms of.
No, no, no. We're starting, we're going to start it on the week of the 20th. So it's the week after the holiday.
Okay. I guess so.
It's still two weeks. So you're right. Yeah.
The question is, is two weeks a sufficient time? And I don't know the answer. It's just.
For ourselves as, as a district, and if we're pushing on a survey, we give more than two weeks. So.
What, what would we typically, I mean, I'd like to make sure we do this right.
Two weeks, but I mean, it's, it's up to you. Our application deadline at this point in time is November 7th. So the survey, if we did it in, yeah, see, that doesn't give us really enough time to turn everything around.
If everything is ready, it sounds like, right?
Yes. I mean, the server, our, the survey is ready. It's just a question of what has to happen with the input from the survey. So we have to take all that information from the survey and triangulate it and come up with everything that then needs to go into the position description and.
So what I think I hear you saying, maybe we start the survey on the 14th and take it through the.
31st.
Or the 20th. Yes. Yeah. 14 through.
Through the 30th.
31st. Does that sound more reasonable? And John, is that closer to what, the amount of time you typically give?
So the only problem with this at this point in time that I look at is that it's Wednesday. We have to get the principals together and really make sure that they have a true understanding of what has to happen for Friday.
Got it.
And.
Too short.
It's really short, plus there's a holiday and we may have somebody missing.
Right.
For whatever reason. So you're, it's, it's, it's going to be tight. And then making sure that we get out there and probably support them. It's, it's out.
So let's do this. Let's just try this. Let's take it the 20th. Week of the 20th and week of the 27th. Do a check-in.
Right.
Do a check-in. If we need to extend it, we can extend it. And that way we can say, hey, you know what? We've got 1,400 responses. Is that typical for you guys? Or is that real low? Do we need to extend it further than that? Would that work for you?
That would work for the principals because they're in the midst of doing classroom observations and the midst of doing evaluations that are going to be due.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's try that. Let's just try the week of the 20th, 27th. And then, and then we'll, we'll do a check-in along the way and say, here's where we stand.
And you, you were saying that typically you normally do, a two-week survey isn't normal time for you. For us, it usually lasts longer. Yeah, I think that, that makes sense then. Let's check in at the end of two weeks to see if we've gotten our typical numbers.
Right.
Does that make sense?
The survey only goes out to parents and who's the audience for that?
Every, everyone.
Yeah. All these groups you've talked about, people who are outside of the group, anyone who wants to participate, they'll have the link, where to go to do it. So it'll be, almost everyone in your community will have the opportunity.
That's why we really encourage you to work with your local media as well, because a lot of times your local media can push that link out to community members. You know, these are people that vote for your bonds and your parcel taxes. So you want them to know that we want to hear their voices. And it's hard for us who generally have contacts within the school district itself, the schools. So getting your local media, if they could publicize it as well, is very important.
Two more questions and a, yeah, two more questions and a comment. One, whenever the survey does go out, if we could also make sure, maybe this for Jorge, if we could make sure it's on our website, which is.
Yes.
That'd be great. Second question is, do we have, is there, when, when the surveys are sent out, I understand the results are somewhat anonymized or in the aggregate, but do we have a way of ensuring that like we don't have mul- multiple entries for the same?
You know, it's interesting. We have been asked that question a number of times. We have never perceived that that is a problem. I, I, you know, never worked with any district where it was a problem. We do not have any quantifiable way of, of knowing, David, if you took the survey three times. But, you know, honestly, if somebody took it three times, they probably want to make sure that that voice is being heard. So.
I, yeah, I hear that. I, my concern is having some voices with more voice than others. So it's maybe something for us to be mindful of. Okay. The, the last question was more actually for the group. I think I heard what you said was that there's some concern in terms of pushing timelines, crunching other analyses and things like that. I'm curious from the board's perspective. I know that we've, we have started from like a target deadline of when we would like to make the hire. My, my view is if, I am happy to be flexible with that if we need to be, if we get a better process and outcome. But I'm, I'm speaking only for myself. I'm curious for you guys.
Is it, are we going to move to timeline next? Because before we do, I think I wanted to call our director of communications, Jorge Gantana. I think he has some.
I want to ask him a question.
Yeah, Dr. Baker wants to ask him.
Yeah.
All right, Jorge, I see you're online and Evelyn has it where you can answer this question. So with the social media piece, are you able to connect with the people in, that connect with us through social media in regard to what's happening in the district? And maybe get the link out to them regarding this survey so it reaches more than just our parents? All you have to do, Jorge, is, oh, there you are. Good.
So yes, we're able to post the link on social media and all of our followers are able to see it organically. But we're also able to boost that post so it can reach others in the Redwood City area.
So also you would give it, and is that include the Pulse and the other social media piece that most of our parents and community members go to?
Yes, we can also, obviously, yes, we can definitely share it with the local news media. And actually, I think, I believe we may have a member of the news media online tonight. She was waiting for this information. I've been in touch with her. So yes, so definitely the, the local papers that cover our area and cover the district. We will be sharing the information with them and then they'll be writing stories about it.
Great.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Excellent.
I know we want to have some discussion on timeline. Is, I don't know if that's, if that's coming up.
I don't think it's, it's the time to talk timeline yet, so, but we'll get there. So I still need to know about the languages for the survey. Spanish for sure.
For sure. I know we have 37 languages in the district. What do we normally translate into for it? Is it usually just?
Just looking at the stack rank of language translation requests of the county of San Mateo, Chinese is the only other language that's sort of like above a noise threshold, I would say.
Is that Mandarin?
Mandarin Chinese. Yeah.
All right.
Just based on county statistics.
So would you like it translated in Mandarin as well as Spanish?
It's up to you. I, I wouldn't because we always go by the threshold of how many we actually have.
Okay.
That, we don't even have, we don't have 50.
Okay. All right.
It's in the.
Okay.
And then English and Spanish covers.
Yeah.
And it's usually what you traditionally.
Yeah.
Do, right, as a district. Okay. Eric, you're on to do number six. And I'm leaving my calendar here for you.
Timeline. I think we've pretty much gone over a lot of it just now. Let's just start with number six. AXA publication. If you, our familiar AXA is the Association of California School Administrators and they published the edcal. And so we're going to send it out on the 17th as an announcement that Redwood City is opening for a superintendency. As we get more information, including the position description and salary range, we'll include that information there as well. And for those applicants who have decided to put their applications in early, because we will have people who will put it in even before the position description is out, we will also notify them back to say, hey, by the way, if salary is, range is now a part of, of the process and they can go back and take a look at their application along the way. So that's our, our goal for publication in edcal. Questions or thoughts about that?
Has this, so has this role already been posted on your website or?
On our website, yes. Typically, once, once a district has approved a contract, we will basically say, hey, Redwood City has an opening for a superintendency. It doesn't have any, any information behind it, just that it's, it's now open. Good question. Dates for the stakeholder input, we basically are looking at October 20th and 21st. We, we can extend that. That's going to shift a little bit based on the number of groups and the, the work that we need to do. So we'll work with Evelyn in terms of, because one of the things we want to be very cautious of is making sure that she's not overwhelmed, because there's a lot of groups and a lot of people. And so initially we had it a week earlier, but we thought, you know, based on the number of groups and so on, let's move it back a week for that aspect of it. So it'll be the week of the 20th. And that's when we will have both in-person and Zoom sessions available. And if we need to move it back or include two or three more days, we will do that as well.
Dr. Baker, I think we had to be. We just. Yeah, we just did major dates for meeting. There is a major D-LAC meeting on the 20th.
And, 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 yeah, so maybe we can just tap into that. Would that work for you, John?
It will work depending on the, it'll work depending on the number, what, the number of minutes that you need for the, on the agenda.
Okay.
I've got it packed. I, I can meet with Catherine and probably take some things off of that too. So we have that scheduled. Were we thinking of having at least two members from each school site?
So that would be ideal.
It will start out with dinner and so forth, and then we'll move into the meeting.
Okay.
And, and how long do you usually need on, on the agenda?
Typically, we take 30 minutes. We can back that up a bit because if we were to give them, they're going to get the same three questions. And so if we front load them with the three questions, then it could take, you know, 20 or less.
Okay.
Okay?
Going to be at the Hoover Library. It's one of our sites.
Okay. I'm just hitting rewind button for a second. Jen, did you ask if they already had the position active on their website? Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking here at leadershipassociates.org slash active searches and I, I don't see.
She's going to put it on as soon as we finish, finish this meeting.
At the end of the meeting.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we just, literally, yeah, yeah.
And then I think one, one of the things that I'm sensing from the other board members and I have it myself is like, are we allowing enough time for community input, for stakeholder input? I mean, this is something that's very important to me and I think to the whole board that we're, that we ensure that we, you know, we hear from, I, obviously we've listed out the partners and you're going to have them scheduled in.
Right.
We have no idea, having never gone through this before, we have no idea.
Yeah.
We just, we say we want to have, ideally, we'd be able to, you know, I think we said we wanted to have a superintendent selected by January, but does that actually leave enough time for, are we compromising our ability to get stakeholder input? Because I'm not sure we fully understand the trade offs there.
Yes, I, I think it will work. I think it will work. I think if we move the stakeholder input, input from the twentieth, the twenty first, twenty second and twenty third, maybe, that's plenty of time.
Okay.
Plenty of time. Yeah.
Plus the survey. And so you're saying that normally stakeholder input is taken, taken care of over a week, over four days?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, typically it's two days. We've just, yes, typically we would do the, the stakeholder input in, in two days. We're going to move it to four days. To make sure, because as you guys continue to give us different groups and so on, and we wanted to see how serendipitous it can be in terms of are there natural meetings that are happening? That we can tap into, even if it's outside, outside of that window. There could be something happening next week and if we take a look at the list and so on, we say, hey, hey, can we come in on that meeting? Possibly. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll do the best that we can. We'll work with you. Don't worry, John, we got you.
There is something happening next week. Two board members are on this committee with me.
There is, I have to say.
There is another group. I mean, this is a group that is, when you're, when you're talking about the characteristics of a superintendent.
Yes.
This is one where we're reimagining our budget and we have this huge stakeholder, stakeholder group happening uh, next week on Tuesday. And it's, we're from six to eight o'clock. Now, there's a lot of data that they've asked for and we've got it ready to go. So if you want to attend that meeting, just let me know and I'll coordinate with Rick in order to see how I can put that on the agenda for what, I guess thirty minutes, I heard.
Yeah, okay, well, let us check our schedules and we'll, we'll tap into it if we can. I mean, that's ideal because again, if you have audiences right there, why wouldn't we, if the opportunity presents itself for us to do it? That'd be great.
Where was that going to be held, by the way?
Here. It's right here on the fourteenth.
I, I do worry a little bit about the context of that meeting and then folks over indexing on that in terms of their responses. So I, I don't I, I wonder if it's a good opportunity, like if, if we are going to have the, the big thing is we want to make sure that we're getting input.
Yes.
And then we theoretically will have this open meeting at some point. So I, I wonder if rather than taking away and over focusing on two very big topics at the same time, whether it's a quick thing of just like, by the way, this is also happening and there is an opportunity to join.
I was going to say the same thing, David. Maybe it, I will work with you, David, but maybe that's what it is. You have this group there and you let them know, hey, a survey's coming out. We would love, we'd love for you to be a participant in it. Here are the types of questions and you can move from there. So whatever, we'll, we'll work with you, whichever works for you.
I, I defer to you guys.
No, I think that's, that's a, a great consideration. Here's the QR code. I want you to scan with your phone right now. Take, where we're going to pause the meeting for thirty seconds, please take out your phone, point it at the QR code and then like fill it out while we're having the meeting or after the meeting.
Love it. Seriously, I love it. I think it's love it.
And, and, and maybe we could just have a general thing, like as we're having meetings.
Yeah.
Right, there, there's a little flyer with a QR code, like we need your input, like scan this code and just kind of litter those. Yeah.
Yeah, we have them coming out.
I love that idea.
Thank you. Uh, do we have to give you any copyright? If you say, if we take it back to our firm and say, hey, did we get an idea from Redwood City? Okay. Alrighty. So we have some ideas for the stakeholder input. We're going to stretch it out. We're going to work with both Evelyn and John to get a sense of what's the best way of doing it. We're going to try to set up a, a QR code so that you guys have something that in any meeting that you're in. Here you go. Just flash it real quick. I love that idea. Let's see, it closes on the seventh. So at that point, we'll be able to give you a more comprehensive report in terms of, okay, closed on the seventh. Here are the number of applicants who've applied. Here's their current positions along the way, et cetera. With that, we'll be setting up a, a portal as well as notebooks for you guys so that once we have vetted all of the various candidates and we'll do a lot of work on that, obviously. We will give you a couple of days before we meet on November twenty first and say, here are our tiers of the candidates as we see it. At this point, you'll have a few days to go through that information. We'll meet on the twenty first and we'll go through and identify who are the candidates that the board decides they want to interview. Typically, our number is five. We've done as few as three. We've done as many as seven. So just know I'm not locking you into five. We're going to come with the premise of five, but know that, that is very flexible.
Eric?
Yes.
Quick question. You mentioned kind of that a lot. Some candidates apply very late in the, the process. How hard is that November seventh date typically? Is that always just kind of, or do you, have you guys had situations where you've had to kind of, you know, you're waiting for a few more really tough?
Well, we've had to extend it.
Yeah, i- if we didn't have enough candidates per se, but those who are serious, they will hit the date. Because typically either we're recruiting and we know and they know that here's the date. And we know that they're not going to get it in until the, the sixth along the ways. Occasionally you'll get someone who, oh, I missed the deadline, but that's user error. We don't do anything with that. But typically they're very, very good at getting it in on time. And if they pull an application, because sometimes what they'll do, they'll pull an application and just hold it off. They won't submit it. And we can look and say, hey, are you, as Jack, you mentioned earlier, we will ask anyone who's pulled uh, application, two things. One, we will talk to them and say, are you intending to submit an application? And then two, there will be something coming from our admin that says, hey, deadline's approaching, please submit. If you're going to submit, please submit by this particular date.
And, and so all the community input and sort of our view of like the characteristics and personal, professional and leadership ones, that those all form into how we select from that pool of applicants. It's not necessarily to create the job description.
No.
That's kind of what I had messed up in my, in my head, in my head was that, oh, we needed to get all this input done before we could even start advertising. But no, you're saying the advertisement is sort of generalish and the characteristics are what we're going to use to select from that pool.
Yes, exactly. And there will be a point in the process, to that point, Mike, where the position description will be available and the applicants will be able to see it. And so that they can either tailor their packet to what, what's been identified by the group. With that being said, we will take about two and a half hours during that meeting on the twenty first to go through the various candidates. We'll do several things. One, we'll identify the candidates that the board decides to interview. We'll also identify questions that we will be asking. We will give you a template of here are some suggested questions based on what we've learned about your district and from the surveys from yourselves and so on. We'll also talk about what's called a contract parameters and we, each of the candidates that you select on that night, we're going to give them a contract parameter sheet and that contract parameter will say, here's the salary I'm requesting. Here are the benefits. Here are other things that we want along the way. But we'll talk, we'll show you that form so you'll know that, that they're receiving that. Each receives a personalized letter as well as a phone call from us about the, the times. What time the board wants to start the interviews that day, what time you want to complete them. Typically, our interviews are anywhere from fifty five minutes to an hour. Typically thirteen questions that is identified by the board and at that candidate review meeting, we will start the process of identifying questions that you do want to ask. We do tell you that during the initial interview, meaning on day one, that or the first round, that we stick with the, whatever number of questions or whatever questions you ask, that you stick to those questions, no deviations and, and no probing beyond that. Once you've identified, okay, here are the people who we want to go to our next round. Then you have the ability to, we'll stop, we'll form specific questions, because you may have specific questions from different candidates. You want to know more about this person's fiscal experience. This one, you want to know how they work with our, our unions and so on. But we'll, we'll talk through that at that January, excuse me, November twenty first meeting about identifying the candidates you want to interview, looking at the questions, looking at the process timeline in terms of date, I mean, uh, number of questions, location. We typically have a location that is off of your sights but within your district footprint. So typically, if you have a relationship like a chamber of commerce and they have a room we can use or a foundation room or any places like that, we use those as an offsite spot to conduct interviews.
And, and then just to double check, the, these dates that you're talking about, the twenty first is a Friday. Um, and that's expected. And the other ones on a Saturday, which would make a lot of sense, all day one. Okay.
Yeah. Questions and thoughts about those?
And Dr. Baker, it sounds like you have a couple of ideas of where an offsite room might work for us. Okay, great. Yeah.
Got it. Perfect, perfect. And we will be walking you through these processes long before we get there. So with these dates and so on, we'll give you updates in terms of the position description. Here's where we are. We're going to get it to you by this date. We'll lead it back by this particular date. We'll talk about the salary range and also everything that you see that we've talked about today, we will give you updates. If we're talking about things such as the community input, we will say, hey, survey wise, uh, we may want to go out longer or we think the two weeks is going to be enough. We're talking about the, the various meetings we're going to have. We'll look and say, ooh, we, we, uh, we may need to extend that or we think we're in good shape along the way. So we'll keep you informed so you can keep your community informed as well.
And I just wanted to kind of clarify for all of us, have you all checked these dates with your personal calendars? Because if we need
I'm going to move something around because I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this. So you cannot call into a closed session.
You can add, you can add, no. Yeah, I'm sure there's conflicts for everyone, but I think that at this point, we're all planning to work them out. But, but do check them. It's the, the thirteenth is the Saturday in December. Um, the twenty first is that Friday. I think those are kind of the key ones.
Yes, they are. Correct.
Yeah.
Anyone see any conflicts at this point?
What are the block? What are the blocks that we need to put on our calendars? The way I see it?
The thirteenth is all day.
Yeah.
And the twenty
The twenty first is going to be a two and a half hour meeting. Typically would be, for example, your five thirty until seven thirty or eight.
Does, does some, someone from the district would have to be here? Yeah.
These times just for the trustees or did I miss those? I, I'm not seeing them on the
They're not on the calendar.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
Yes, yeah. So in terms of the, the candidate review, November twenty first, that is just for the trustees.
But we have to agendize it and
Correct. And, and
Is it closed session?
It's closed session and Serena will give you the language for that, Evelyn, for, for, for that. And then on the actual interview date on, on December thirteenth, all day, board only. There are times in which we do have the assistant there.
Okay.
Just to greet people coming in, not necessary, not, not always, but we can talk about logistically and once we get to that, that part, we can talk about that.
Yeah. And so then I guess on the, the twenty first, before we set the hours, we just want to figure out who from the school, the district staff would need to be there. Like, is it just Evelyn? Or it would no one have to be there and just make sure that we're cognizant of that.
Yes, it could be either way. We've done it without the assistant. We've done it with the assistant.
And it does depend on the hours.
Right.
So if you had it after work hours.
Right.
We did need somebody to open and close the
Just so we can pencil something in, understanding, is understanding that it could move. Should we say like three, four, like what, what should we pencil it? Are you referring to the November twenty first?
The twenty first.
November twenty first, from what time to what time?
What's the earliest that you could meet?
I, I'm not restricted on that day.
Cecilia wins, wins your day. Three, five? Okay.
Five, five to eight, is that okay?
Okay, five to eight. Got it.
And then we'll make sure that that's okay for uh, district staff before we lock that in. Is that fair? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Saturday, I think we just assume like the full day, right? Start at like nine AM and run till five.
Usually it's going to be about eight o'clock. Yeah.
Coffee.
Lots of, lots of.
So, um, just very quick, I would have to check with the CZI if they're open after hours and the weekend. I don't think they are. So, yeah, so that might not be available.
And, and the one on the twenty first is basically here. Yeah, the twenty first is here. Yeah. Yes, the thirteenth will be the, what, guys wanting to use my backyard? You laugh, but Jackie and I did one. We charged the district. We literally did one in a living room.
Just have to post where the meeting happened.
Yeah.
I did a separate question that's maybe too far along, but the, the process for create, I guess, developing the superintendent contract as an offer, what, what does that look like?
So basically, once we identify the number of candidates you're going to bring back for a second round, they will have already given us the contract parameters. We'll give it to you to consider basically after the last interview. Once you've identified that one final candidate, we will show you their contract request. And we will work with them in terms of, here's where the salary range was. And so you probably need to be somewhere in that ballpark along the way. Once they're identified, in reality, Leadership Associate starts to back away. And the district negotiates with that candidate uh, and you're typically your attorney to, to look at the contract to see that, uh, if their requests are within the range and within the, the spirit and language of a contract that you currently have and/or any changes that you need to make. And so that process usually takes about a week to ten days, because there may be some back and forth in terms of language or requests and so on. So that's typically what happens. So we have the candidate, the candidate shows you their, their uh, contract parameters. You take a look at it, you either, and at that point, you will tell, let the candidate know you are our, you are our finalist for the position. You don't tell them they're the person yet. You're the finalist pending board approval at a regularly scheduled board meeting. But once you've identified this person, then that becomes between you and the, and the candidate, the district and the candidate to do the negotiations for the contract itself.
And I think you said, is it typical then to use, I guess, the typical district council or is it typical for the board to have separate council?
Typically district council.
And then you also have the candidate that brings sometimes their attorney.
Their counsel.
Brought my counsel.
Yes, yes. And so they will either use access council or they may have their own counsel that they'll bring for that negotiations.
And then the timeframe typically, I understand that you guys are stepping kind of away at that point, but do you have a general sense of what that timing typically looks like?
Typically takes about almost two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, back and forth.
And how, how are we doing on getting through the agenda? We've been
We're pretty close.
Okay, good. Make sure we're pacing well.
No, 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 we're, we're pretty close. And recruitment, as we talked earlier, we're going to be out doing a lot of recruitment. We will have information out there. We'll use your position description. Uh, and once we have that, that will help trigger types of candidates. We will actively recruit as well. As Jackie mentioned earlier, we will be, we, we often, we always ask the candidate, why Redwood City? What's your interest? We ask questions like, what would your admirer say about you? What would your critics say about you? So we can get a an idea of who they are and what they're about. And that's what typically happens there. We've talked about eight, the, the contract parameters in terms of the, uh, current copy of the superintendent's contract. Because John's going to get us the comps and so on, that that will be a part of the process. And so we can use that as a part of the structure for the salary range. And then any other questions you have before we ask you the three questions?
I mean, just quickly, I commend you for the I mean, just quickly, I commend you for the timeline and meeting, what our goals were for it. Are we crazy? Like, is this, is this a realistic timeline here? Just to double check it.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's very realistic. Yes. We, we had a little wiggle room, but we know the importance of you guys getting out there early.
Okay.
You, you really are. And, and that's a good thing. Because right now, uh, we're, we're just starting to hear people who are retiring, leaving, et cetera. And so it's going to really heat up in November, December, in terms of the positions that'll be opening. And so you guys would be right, early enough to, uh, get some good candidates before other positions open up. Jackie?
Well, and I just wanted to, I've just been reflecting on, um, David's question about the contract. Usually what we suggest to boards is that you have, again, maybe a subcommittee that takes a look at your current contract. Your current superintendent's contract and looks, are there things that you want to change? Are there certain, you know, elements of the contract that, you know, you'd like to add or maybe some things that you want to revise in some way? And then work, of course, as Eric mentioned, with your legal counsel. But this would be the time to start looking at the contract to see what is it that you want to offer. And obviously it's going to be negotiated, but you do need to start thinking about it so that once we get to that point. You will have in mind what it is that you want to offer. And I'm going to sit over here and I'm going to close yours. All right.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
So where we have December board completes validation process, we actually don't have a date. And obviously the 13th is a Saturday. So are we talking the following week we would make a decision?
So let me talk to you a little bit about that. The validation visit is a visit in which sometimes boards go to the, uh, place of employment of the prospective finalist for the position. Um, just as we talked about the open forum. Um, I would say in the last five years, Jackie, maybe. Of all the searches we've done, we probably have had. Have we had 10 even? 10 validation?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, not 10. It's not something that a lot of districts do, but you may want to do that. And basically what happens is this, the board or a, uh, subcommittee or working committee of the board would go to the place of employment of the finalist. And then have a conversation about, we're talking to their board, maybe our labor partners, maybe other people along the way. The other thing that happens sometimes is districts will decide, we're going to take not only our board, but we're going to take some more labor partners and so on to this other person's position. Do job alike conversations. This person is going to identify, the finalist is going to identify who you're going to talk to during that particular meeting, et cetera. Usually it fits logistically, uh, appropriate, then sometimes it's done. If it's, let's just say someone that's coming from out of state, obviously you may want to think twice, but you, you get to make that decision. If they're coming from Southern California, you get to make that decision. It's not something that happens all of the time. And you would work that out with the finalists as well. So typically, uh, because the contract is going to take a couple of weeks. It would be sometimes time after the contract is secure typically. You also will have to coordinate with that new person in terms of when do you want this information to go public? Because you're going to do a contract negotiations. This person has to tell their board if they're a sitting superintendent or even if they're, uh, an assistant suit. That, hey, I'm going to be leaving for this position and you want to coordinate when the blast goes out. That, okay, this person's district knows about it. You're, you're going to inform your community at the same time. So we can talk about the validation visit a little more as we go through the, the candidate review. And my reason for saying that is when you start identifying the, I'll use five again as a number of, of candidates you want to interview. You can get a sense of where they're coming from and then decide, okay, they're coming from this area, this area, this area, this area. If this is our candidate, we definitely want to go and visit their site. If they're coming from another area, you don't necessarily have to. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions or thoughts?
Um, before we jump to the three questions, I know that we had some speakers card. I see Zoom hand up. Maybe we'll take our public comment. Um, I, I don't know if they're online. Is Laura online? Okay.
Laura Ramirez?
Si, aqui estoy. Gracias. Escuchen?
Si, va a tener tres minutos.
Okay, muy bien. Voy a empezar muy bien. Bueno, yo considero que al elegir al próximo superintendente deben tener en cuenta que pues, ah. El distrito escolar es una comunidad que habla, habíamos muchos latinos hispanohablantes. Entonces, eh, que el nuevo superintendente sea capaz de representar la diversidad de nuestro distrito. Y también aunque pues sí, la mayoría somos hispanohablantes, también pertenecemos a una comunidad con distintas culturas, idiomas y experiencias. Así que me gustaría que el próximo, al siguiente superintendente también valorara las voces. Garantizar, garantizar la equidad y promover una, una comunicación clara y respeto eso entre la escuela y las familias. Ah, también es importante que pues el próximo superintendente se va a enfrentar a grandes desafíos ya que estamos pasando por. Pues situaciones económicas muy difíciles actualmente. Entonces sería necesario que tuvieron liderazgo fuerte, transparente. Y, y con capacidad de administrar los recursos de manera responsable. Y siempre teniendo un diálogo abierto, verdad, para todas las familias de todo el distrito. Gracias.
All right, thank you, Laura.
I have interpretation.
Thank you. There it is.
Yes. Um, Ms. Laura's interpretation, she's saying the following. I recorded her comment. Give me a second. She says, I consider that selecting the next superintendent, we have to consider. That the district has a large community that is Latino. And the next superintendent should represent our diversity. And also, we are Hispanic and Latinos, but we have, uh, diverse cultural backgrounds. Many different, uh, languages and experiences. So I would really like that the next superintendent value our voices. And guarantees diversity and clear communication, respectful communication between school and families. It is also very important that the next superintendent can face the big challenges that we're facing economically. Uh, lately. So it would be really, um, important for him to have the leadership. And that is needed for him to administer our finances. And to have clear communication with the families throughout our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Nora for the interpretation and Laura for your comments. Um, we do have a hand raised on Zoom. Uh, Chris, you're up next. Three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, so with respect to the hiring of the new superintendent, I, I actually think the, the criteria should be focused on. The highest quality, reading, writing and arithmetic, at learning, at learning those skills at the lowest cost. And I don't think, um, I, I think looking at, um, how to prioritize expenditures across the district to operate within. The means given to it is the most important thing. And I'll give you an example. It's equally important of what you want to do is what you're not going to do. And so spending $35 million of tax money on lighting to replace perfectly good. Working light bulbs that happen to be fluorescent and throwing them in the landfill and replacing them with LED bulbs to save 200,000 a year. Nobody would spend $35 million to save $200,000 a year for 20 years, which is how long the bulbs last. The bond oversight committee chair is upset with this. I think all the taxpayers, once I get my posting on social media will be upset with it. That's the job of the superintendent to say, you know what? That's not aligned with the, with the residents priorities and the taxpayers. That's an example of waste of money. And it's an example of, meanwhile, you have people posting on Nextdoor about trying to get GoFundMe accounts, teachers right before school year for school supplies. That should make everybody upset. And so it's a misappropriation of funds. Um, the second point and related to that is, um, I hope that the headhunter that just spoke. Seeking a new superintendent is also looking for somebody on the bond oversight committee. Because I believe it's been three years now where there's been not the required memberships according to law, the education code that requires there to be certain. Uh, groups represented on the bond oversight committee, the least of which is, not the least of which is a taxpayer representative. There are no taxpayer representatives. You have had somebody that else, else that runs a bond oversight program, a bond, uh, program over in Palo Alto. You have somebody that's, uh, whose wife makes money from the school districts on the bond oversight committee. You have people in the construction industry, everybody that has some stake in it, but there's nobody that represents actually truly taxpayers. It's kind of honestly pretty insidious. So, uh, President Wells, I think you need to direct the, your, you and your colleagues to find somebody. Uh, to, to get the job done because honestly, somebody can file a lawsuit to stop all the bond spending. If you don't get the required seats filled. It can't be three years and you don't fill these seats. And David Weekly will talk about it. I've had many emails with him. Carl's upset about it. Lander's, the bond oversight committee. Get it done. You guys are violating the law. I've had a, a phone call with John Niblin. Bill Tunic, whatever. He, he's of course going to say everything's fine. So please get this done. And, um, focus on the residents and not the special interests and everybody else except the teachers and the kids. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. And I think that's our segue into talking about the characteristics of the next superintendent that we're looking for.
Okay. So we're going to ask you the three basic questions. What are the characteristics? What are the strengths of the district? And what are the opportunities for the district? So we can scroll around and, uh, shout out popcorn out. We'll do them in sequence. If, for example, we're talking about the strengths and we transition, excuse me, we started talking about the characteristics and we transitioned to the strengths. And you think of another characteristic to say, hey, I thought of another characteristic and we can put it there as well. Also, keeping in mind a strength can also be an opportunity. So with that being said, what are their strengths? Excuse me, what are their characteristics you want to see in the next superintendent?
I'll start. Um, I would like to see somebody that has empathy, definitely integrity, and that is, uh, visible in the community.
Others.
Uh, I'll get through my, my general wish list. I think I have six things that I wrote down. I think there's some overlap with what Cecilia mentioned. One is, um, and probably the most important is having, um, an equity and impact orientation. So, um, as many of the speakers already said, we have a diverse community. I think we want to value that and make sure that we're driving towards impact. Uh, second is, I'd love to have someone that's, um, data fluent, that is able to, to continue pushing toward that lens. And so, um, just a very targeted approach. Um, someone who is able and willing to foster a family and community relationships. So in part through community visibility, the entire, uh, community. The last three are the ability to partner with the, the broad board on strategic initiatives or strategy broadly. Um, the ability to maintain relationships with, uh, school and district staff. And then the ability to, um, certainly remain compliant with laws and regs, but also who, uh, understands and values the importance and power of policymaking. That one's, that one's very hard, but that's a wishlist.
Thank you.
I have, I guess overlaps with both the trustees, so I'll highlight the ones that are a little bit maybe different. Um, the speaker brought it up all earlier. We know, we've been talking about bilingual, but also bicultural. There's like, I mean, not slight, there's a lot of difference between those two. And I think with our community being bicultural actually might be even more important than being bilingual. Um, the other one for us, for me at least, was a willingness to like come with new ideas, try new ideas for us. Um, especially with the academic achievements, hopefully have some previous experience kind of lifting a district in that, that space. Um, and also having experience working with the diverse demographics of our district.
Yeah, I would say, uh, one of the main things I'm looking for is a proven history of working effectively with, especially with low income Latino populations. To drive high English and math literacy, as someone who's data driven and eager to apply pedagogy effectively. Uh, someone who's thoughtful and professional and working with staff, teachers and the board. We've been blessed to have that in our prior superintendent. I would really like us not to have a regression in that, uh, category. Uh, and somebody who can really connect deeply and effectively with a diverse set of communities. Uh, Redwood City encompasses many very different communities with different needs. And the ability to connect with each and authentically hear, understand and respond to them is going to be a challenge. And so I'd love to have a candidate who can, who's up to that challenge.
Thank you.
I, I agree with a lot of what people have said. I think that, um, you know, bilingual is going to be, I think is really important, uh, characteristic that we want to put in there. Um, we're just thinking, I kind of went through the sections of the survey and was thinking through that there. So maybe I'll, I'll lean on the professional experiences. But seeing proven success and proving outcomes for emerging bilingual, multilingual learners and our unduplicated students. Um, you know, that really aligns with the goals in our LCAP, but particularly, uh, uh, goals two and three. And so I, I think that's important. Um, you know, leaders that have raised reclassification rates, reduced LTL numbers, um, things along those lines. And, and have built really culturally responsive systems, um, kind of a key characteristic that I'd want to see. Uh, the reality is, um, I think we need someone that's going to have strong experience with fiscal stabilization during enrollment decline. Um, you know, it's like, I want to sit there and say like, I want to think of the leader for five years from now or six years from now. But what's facing us right in the next three or four years is really, really going to be important. And so we, you know, we're going through some of that process now, but it's not going to end this year. And I think that having someone that's had that experience before would be really good. Um, seeing, uh, proven community engagement and trust building in diverse settings. So unifying their varied communities, um, you know, skilled it, transparent and inclusive decision making. Uh, those would be kind of key characteristics I'd want. Um, you know, instructional leadership, uh, is important. I want, I want, would want to make sure that, you know, if we can get all of this, right? Like, I don't know if I'm describing the unicorn here, but, um, you know, instructional leadership and continuous improvement culture. Um, those would be, you know, a real, a real track record of sort of aligning SEL and PSS framework and instruction. Um, that's kind of our goal one in our LCAP. So maybe, maybe it's not, maybe that really is kind of a requirement here. Um, you know, talent development. I would love to see like, are they good at coaching? Like, how are they building up their site administrators, their cabinet staff, you know, everything along there? You know, do they have, uh, um, you know, are they really able to help people reach their max potential? Uh, and kind of pull that in. And then, you know, one, one of, I mean, Redwood City has multiple. You know, innovative programs and understanding them, uh, um, you know, whether the, the multilingual programs, whether it's their gate program. Um, whether it's parent participation, um, you know, some experience with that. Because I think a lot of the critical decisions is going to require empathy and understanding of how all of these different programs work and where they fit into the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Others?
Sorry, I'll just add one more thing and I am confident that we are describing the unicorn. Uh, the, the one thing I didn't mention was on the experiential background. I, I think some of my colleagues already mentioned this. I, I, I agree that the, the best case is a proven track record and all these characteristics. As a superintendent in the, uh, in that role specifically. That said, I'm not personally foreclosed. I think that there are other ways to demonstrate the qualities, um, even if you are not directly in that role. So I, I would just, I'll throw that. I don't think it's a necessary qualification, even if it's often a, a good indicator.
Okay. Other characteristics?
Um, I guess I'll say a good listener, someone that takes people's inputs and has equity as a priority. Um, someone that, um, works well with others. Also, um, they build partnerships and continue to grow those partnerships. Um, basically someone that is not just checking a box. Actions speak louder than words. And so we want to see that. Thank you.
I think someone who is rooted in practical pedagogy, having served in a classroom, having taught. And knowing how to coach teachers and knowing how to coach principals to coach teachers, takes that role seriously.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to shift us to where are the district strengths? This is where you get a chance to brag. And one of the things we don't do well is to brag about ourselves, but here's your opportunity to do that. Why Redwood City? All right.
I mean, uh, Mike brought it up. I, I think it's one of our district strengths and it will also, it is our district challenge. All of our school of choices and our diverse community. I mean, we have so much to offer here in Redwood City to all of our learners. Um, but it is very wide ranged of what we, we have and how we're going to kind of use our limited, um, budget. Right? So it's a strength and a challenge. We offer all these things, but how can we really fund everything?
Okay. Others?
I think we have an awesome board. You know, there, there's all sorts of crazy YouTube videos of. You know, there, there's all sorts of crazy YouTube videos of what it looks like at other board meetings. And we are blessed to have a highly professional, highly cooperative board that's all here for the same reason. They go and make sure that all of the kids of this district get a great education. And so, uh, none of us have an axe to grind. All of us are hungry for the data, hungry to do the right thing. And I think that an effective superintendent could come in here and very quickly partner with us and find all of us, uh, eager and willing partners to help them succeed. So I think that's, that is definitely a strength of, of the district.
Good. Thank you.
Uh, I think aside from the board, that I think in general, the district has a very strong community feel, which is, um, great just because we do have a multicultural community. Um, I think there's ways to strengthen it, but I think it's a great starting place where, where we are. Uh, I think as other trustees mentioned, there is consistent alignment around equity as a focus. Uh, I, among the board, among the district, and I think among, um, staff as well. Um, so it's, it's great to have that unified front. Um, I think we've also demonstrated through a lot of the work that, that we've done, um, a dedication to kind of the, the whole child mindset where we've, there's quite a bit of, um, work that's been an investment that's gone into not only academics, but mental health. Um, so I think that reflects our, our priorities. And then I think we do have a strong, uh, bilingual staff across the, the, the spectrum. And I think that's not just a technical skill, but also a mindset. Um, and like having witnessed a lot of the, uh, the Spanish speaking portions of different events, like there's quite a commitment to it. So, uh, I think there's a great foundation.
Um, I think another thing, um, it's the communication with, within cabinet members, teachers, principals, staff in general, and, um, with our community. I mean, I know that there's always obviously room for growth, but I, I think in Redwood City, that's a really good job in communication.
Good.
I think we are a district that's willing to do new things, not just stick with a status quo. Uh, we're right next to Stanford. We've partnered with Stanford to go and help research, uh, what are best practices and district, districts like this, uh, to help be a leader in that way, to not only transform what happens in this district, but also to influence other districts that are similarly situated and to try new, new approaches to solve these problems.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll double down on the mental health, our golden bell winning, uh, mental health program that's been put in there. Uh, and I, I think that the, you know, from the cabinet down through the staff, an amazing staff, uh, by, by all means, but, uh, also just the focus on, on equity. Um, it's a really, really diverse community. Um, and I think that everybody's here concerned about every child doing really well. So.
Other strengths you want to talk about? As a teacher, we believe in wait time. Oh, you know. Okay, we'll move to opportunities. And as I said, if you think of another strength and/or another characteristic, let us know. What are the opportunities here?
I mean, I can start. I think that, you know, our, our, this is not to, it's typical of all the districts, but you know, we were seeing steady academic growth year over year in the teens, and then the pandemic hit. We're starting to see that turnaround now, um, and it's coming in through a lot of the stuff that Dr. Baker and his cabinet have put in place. But, you know, really capitalizing on the, that groundwork and being able to, um, bring it to the next level for, you know, all of our, all of our learners, but also particularly for our, our emerging multilingual learners, um, and watching those reclassification rates. We just went to the reclassification ceremony where like 230 students were reclassified. It was amazing. We'd love to see 500 or whatever is the potential, potential number there. Um, I think those are some great opportunities that we have here.
Thank you.
I mean plainly, we, we have students that are not being, uh, well-served. So we, we have fifth grade classrooms that don't have a single pupil that are at, at level in math. Um, we've got, um, about a third of our, I'm sorry, about half, a little higher than half now of our non-sped students who joined us in kindergarten, uh, are English proficient by end of third grade. Uh, ideally that should be like 95%, right? Uh, because it's really clear that if you miss that and you don't achieve full English proficiency by end of third grade, it becomes harder and harder and harder to catch up. Um, so I'd, I'd really, it'd be great if we could tackle that. And that's a, that's a big challenge that we have.
Other thoughts?
I, I'll change the wording a little bit. I don't know. I'm sure, no, I'm not sure well-served. I think we have students who aren't reaching their potential, um, and we got to, it's a tough nut to crack. Um, and we're seeing that, I think, both in the absolute achievement level as well as, um, probably growth levels to some extent. Well, that one's a little bit murkier. Um, so that's some, that it's an exciting opportunity to tackle. And I think everyone's invested on, um, at the same vision. Uh, I think, uh, at, I think there's still room for the district and this board accountability, um, for having, um, I think we can be better about maintaining heightened focus on specific areas and not trying to do everything at once. I think we get really excited about all the things we can do. Um, but I think it's a growth area for us to, to narrow in on what exactly is our top priority. I think, uh, other things that on the financial end, we, we are seeing declining enrollment in certain schools. So that's something that everyone is, um, dealing with, or many people are in. We're not, uh, we're not exempt from that. Um, and I think the community engagement is, I think we've, we've, we're making, I don't know. I'm relatively new. I feel like there's a lot of growth already that's happening, but I think it's still another area for us to continue pushing on. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
So a, a challenge and then I see it almost like as a virtue where our English learners struggle, struggle, but yet we have seen growth. And I've mentioned it before, and I know that maybe perhaps we could agree to disagree sometimes. But, um, moving the needle, maybe for some is moving slowly, slowly, but we are moving in the right direction. And again, we see it, um, with the results of the test. Our staff working hard with the teachers, all cabinet going over to the school sites and, would you say evaluating what the principals are doing with their staff? And so I, I really, um, am passionate about what our district is doing. So although yes, it's a challenge, I also see it as, having the faith in our employees. And I think that's a plus.
Thank you.
Yes. Related to declining enrollment, um, we have been in an era of deficit spending. We had some very tough cuts we had to make when COVID grants ran out. And so, uh, that's tough and, and that's, that's probably continue, going to continue to be tough. So figuring out how to make the most of the resources that we have to drive high educational attainment. It just even in terms of, you know, where our campuses are at today. Um, we, we have some campuses that are below a point of, you know, reasonably sustainable population. Don't currently have a plan to get them back above that. And conversely, we've got some campuses that are bursting at the seams. And so, and that's extremely complicated thing to figure out how to thread the needle on. How do you fix, uh, a problem like that? So that's definitely a challenge that, that we're going to face.
Yeah. Other thoughts? Comments?
I can't remember if this is mentioned during the strengths, but, and I think this was alluded to earlier in the conversations, but, um, our current superintendent has fostered very good relationships with a variety of organizations, which, um, we currently benefit from. It would be lovely, it'd be lovely to continue that, uh, going forward, but I think it's a big strength right now.
Should this superintendent, we, um, looking at things such as advanced degrees, necessary, not necessary? Meaning a doctorate? Sometimes boards are.
I, fool, it's hard to imagine without it, but like, I guess. It always seems like, I, I don't know. Um, I, I, yeah, I don't know. What's, uh, what is, what is typical? I mean, my, my experience has always been that they have had an advanced degree when they're superintendent.
More and more are.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think most now are typically if they're not, it was a case of them being, um, moved up from within their own district and they didn't have one. And so they elevated to the superintendency. More and more are not necessarily a criteria, but sometimes boards like to say preferable, that they would have PhD. Others don't even want to touch it.
I do not care.
Okay.
I mean, much, much more important to see the potential impact, um, as like tied to actual results that they've achieved in the past.
Got it. Okay.
Impressive results over an impressive thesis. Yeah.
My last comment or question is, superintendent experience?
That would be my number one priority. But again, if not.
Okay. Anyone else?
I mean, I, I, I think it would depend. I mean, if they come from a large, much larger district and they're say just at a super. Yeah, not the same. So, I mean, again, this is another one where I would look to the experience and say, like, is it, you know, is it at the scope and track record of the kind of things that we want to see? Obviously good, but yeah, no, I don't, wouldn't be required for me.
Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with Mike. If the person can show demonstrated impact at equivalent scope, then I care a little bit less about title.
Okay. Yeah. Well, you did it. We want to thank you. You did it. We got a lot of information. We will be taking this information and working with both John and Evelyn and putting together a schematic of dates, but of, uh, times for the engagement for your community partners. We'll get that back out to you. Uh, John's going to get us the comps and we'll have an idea of where, where that goes and we'll be in touch. As I said, we will always get back to you with information to let you know where we stand in this particular process. Do not hesitate to reach out to us also. With that, any other questions before we wrap it up?
I'd love to see a candidate have an input on how AI could be used to better deliver quality education to kids and the way that that is likely to both positively and negatively impact the, the learning environment. I'd like them to have a thoughtful opinion on that.
And to that point, that may be one of the questions that as we go through the process, that may be a question also that you want to ask. We can ask that question, but I'm just saying that it'd be interesting for you guys to be able to hear the response or something like that. I like that.
Um, on the survey, so in the meeting, in the stakeholder meetings, you had mentioned that you ask people, basically the questions are on the survey and look for open-ended input. Is it possible? I know one of the survey questions for the characteristics, I think a professional one had an open-ended question for it. Would it be possible to do the same for the other ones? Um, you know, just an open-ended, like what personal qualities would you be looking for? In addition to the list of the stack rank list, is that, do you do that typically for surveys? Or have you found that not to be fruitful?
We, we have not, just because we're trying to maintain the standardization of it.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys so much for having us. We really appreciate it. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. This is a, um, this is a tremendous responsibility, you know, it's a, um, for, for, for us. Uh, I know I'm nervous. I don't know about anybody else. Uh, so thank you so much for walking us through it. And as I mentioned to you before, I'm going to repeat it again. This is, uh, you know, none of us on the board have done this before. So, um, the coaching guidance and support, uh, to help us make the best decisions possible and the best outcome we can for the staff that's sitting here at the table with us, that's online, listening to it, that works here in the district, all the communities, the students, the families. Um, we really appreciate it.
Well, and again, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to, to us, you know? You might wake up tomorrow morning and think, oh my goodness, I wish I had said this. Or, you know, I need to ask about this. I wasn't quite sure about this or that. Please, you have our contact information. We can be reached through email, text, whatever, whatever methodology that you'd like to use. We welcome all of your, uh, questions and concerns and just really want to make the process as smooth as possible.
Is that solicitation also open for just general members of the public who want to weigh in?
You know, that's interesting. Um, they generally do whether we welcome it or not. Um, yeah, definitely. Because we're interested in finding out what people, you know, want to tell us.
And if they want to contact you, what is the best way that they can contact you?
For me, it's probably by text or, um, email.
I suggest sending it through our, uh, leadership associate's email.
Okay, great.
Thank you guys. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to our consent items. Um, there's a dozen of them or so, and we're going to approve them all in one motion. Um, can I get a motion to approve?
And if we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are on to 13, which are our action items. Um, hey, the first one is, uh, 13 dot one, which is the approval of the 2425 unaudited actuels financial report. John, do you want to introduce it or should I just send it to Rick? Rick, this is your, your item.
Thank you. Uh, good evening members of the board. Uh, tonight we are, uh, presenting our unaudited actuels for approval. Uh, very familiar slide showing where we're at in the budget cycle. With our prior year unaudited actuels for the 2425 school year, uh, which will lead us right into, uh, first interim, uh, which will talk about our revenues and expenditures between July 1 and October 31 of the current year. So for tonight, uh, the 2425 unaudited actuels are year-end financial reports. Uh, they show how much revenue and expenditures actually occurred during the fiscal year, uh, and then impact the carryover of starting fund balances for the 2526 school year, uh, which will be updated at the first interim report, uh, that's presented in December. Uh, we're right now in the midst of, uh, producing all of the documents for our auditors, uh, which will then come back in late January, early February, uh, with a presentation by, uh, that entity, uh, on the outcome of their audit. Compared, uh, to the estimated actuals that was presented to the board in June along with the, proposed, uh, ultimately adopted budget for 25, uh, 26. Here are some common reasons that there may be variance. And, uh, as I've shared with the board, our variances are getting smaller and smaller on an annual basis, uh, which is something that we've been working with, working for or towards as a department. Uh, but unanticipated revenue comes in. Remember we're creating the budgets, uh, and preparing those for public hearing and adoption, really starting in May. Uh, so anything that comes in after about June 10th isn't always captured, uh, at that point. And some things come in right at, uh, the state adopted budget, right? And then the trailer bill that, uh, follows on an annual basis. Uh, purchase orders that we expected to be fully utilized even in June. Uh, we find out in July that they weren't fully utilized. Uh, so we get to recover that money, so to speak, at that point in time. Uh, or expenditures that were planned for 2425 that didn't materialize. We carry those monies forward to 2526, uh, as you could see in the, uh, documentation that, uh, our restricted ending fund balances were much higher than estimated actuals because of the monies identified that we carried forward to 2526. Uh, so then our actuals, I'm not going to go through and read these. These are the funds that are in our Saks report that was attached to the board agenda item. Uh, and now just, uh, some familiar slides that we used to show, uh, our unaudited actuals with 2425 general fund revenues, uh, illustrating the $146 million uh, of revenue that we received, uh, for 2425. Uh, going into our expenditures for 2425 as well. Coming through here, you can see that about, uh, when the books were closed, about 76.1% of our expenditures were for our employees classified, certified and the associated benefits for those groups. Down a little bit, uh, from what we projected, uh, at estimated actuals, uh, mostly due to finalizing and closing out POs, uh, taking into account contracted services, that type of thing that are providing, uh, needed services to our students, uh, but aren't considered our employees. So on this slide, uh, is, uh, our full budget year, starting at adopted budget for 2425, uh, going through the unaudited actuals of 2425 with the difference being, uh, the difference between estimated and unaudited actuals on there. Uh, and just point about the variances getting tighter. Uh, you know, it wasn't more than a couple of years ago where we were seeing seven, eight, nine million dollars difference. seven, eight, nine million dollars difference, uh, in both revenue and expenditure. So, this is getting much better and the numbers that we're producing at, uh, estimated actuals and budget adoption are much closer to reality than they have been in the past. Uh, this is our components of our ending fund balance. Our Sankey diagram showing, uh, our revenues and expenditures based on our Saks, uh, labels, uh, where our money is coming in from and then where it's being distributed to. Uh, this slide, uh, is going to break down our expenses a little bit different into, uh, classroom, uh, management, retirement benefits, et cetera. And pretty closely color coded on this showing those major groups, uh, and the expenditures for our hundred and fifty three million dollar expenditure budget for twenty four, twenty five. Going into multi-year projections, multi-year projections aren't normally presented with unaudited actuals, but we are bringing this forward to show the impact of the unaudited actuals, especially considering we have fiscal stabilization measures that were identified or unidentified fiscal stabilization measures that were included in the budget for twenty five, twenty six. In June, when approved, it was seven and a half million dollars, uh, in each of the out years, twenty six, twenty seven and twenty seven, twenty eight. Uh, and you can see highlighted in light red, uh, that the fiscal stabilization measures now reflect five point five million in the first out year and three point five million in the second out year that will continue to work to reduce, uh, through first interim and second interim, but also through the work of the, uh, budget committee, uh, that we've brought back, uh, again this year to go through that to identify areas uh, of potential savings or reductions, uh, in order to maintain fiscal solvency, uh, for the district. Uh, here are components of the ending fund balance showing that, uh, we are fiscally solvent by the state standard. Both for the unaudited actuals, our current year budget and our two out years. Um, slide is simply showing the, uh, budget year for our other major funds, uh, that we report on at first, second, uh, and budget adoption. So right now, as I just mentioned, the strategic resource alignment is taking place. We had our first meeting in September. Uh, our second meeting is next Tuesday, October fourteenth, uh, followed by one in November as well, I believe, before ultimately, we bring back recommendations to the board, uh, in January. Uh, for that first interim, as previously mentioned, uh, will come before the board, uh, at the second meeting in December, uh, for, uh, approval, uh, which will then put us right back into that budget decision making mode, uh, getting ready for uh, all of the work that we need to do between that point in time, second interim, uh, and, uh, really March fifteenth, when second interim is due, which will bring us right into budget development for the next year. So all of the work that we're doing now in coordination with the budget committee, uh, along with the board is preparing us to make those decisions going into the twenty six, twenty seven school year. Uh, so with that, I will turn it back over to the board, uh, for any questions and ask for approval.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, and also for taking the time to, I know you've met with us individually to kind of go through the questions. So does anyone have questions, uh, or comments that they'd like to bring up? David Lee? Yeah, please.
I'll just briefly say appreciate Rick, you and your team for doing all of that. Obviously the one on ones are really helpful, but also really appreciate that you're uh, narrowing the variance each year. How you think reflects that we're getting a lot better and more focused on, um, all this stuff, which is obviously going to help prepare us uh, during these times. So thank you for all of that.
Plus one, super appreciated the time that you spent handholding me through what's going on because school budgets are extremely complicated.
Yeah, great job. I mean, that was a significant narrowing of the difference, the variance between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals. And it just reflects like a lot stronger controls that are in there. Could you maybe share one process that changed? Like what, what, what did you do? How did you work your magic? Uh, you don't have to explain all the secrets, uh, but maybe just one, so we can get a glimpse of what, what goes on in.
I don't want you to wait all this.
Exactly. I don't want you to, yeah.
Uh, no, I, I think the biggest thing is, is, uh, m- making educated assumptions based on, uh, the history of the district, uh, what we see on a typical year, uh, and moving forward. And I'll say probably the biggest one is accounting for employee absences and releasing that budget, uh, either halfway through the year or at the end of the year, knowing that, uh, you know, let's say a hundred thousand dollar salary was encumbered for the entire year, but it wasn't filled. Uh, as one example previously that was held on to until unaudited actuals, which contributed to the large drop, especially if there were, you know, let's say a dozen or two dozen positions that were held, uh, encumbered. Uh, and so we've really worked on, uh, recognizing that earlier so that the money drops back into the budget, uh, rather than holding it until unaudited actuals, right? So we have, uh, uh, the real dollars that aren't being spent, but they're held and can't be used. So in order to re- recover those sooner, that, that would probably be one of the bigger ones that's happened over the last two or three years.
Yeah, it's great. It'll give the district the ability to really, you know, predict better for the following year where they can expend and what really has to be reduced back. So that's great. Um, I don't know, Dr. Baker, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Just thank you so much. I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done and also that you've done working closely with the county office of education and with your staff.
All right, and this is an action item. So can I get a motion to approve the unaudited actuals?
I would like to move to approve Rick's fine unaudited actuals.
All second.
All in favor? Great. Okay, we're on to thirteen dot two, which is the adoption of resolution number twelve. This is establishing the twenty four, twenty five GAN appropriations limit and acknowledging the twenty five, twenty six projected limit.
Uh, good evening, trustees. This item is the adoption of resolution number twelve, uh, establishing the GAN appropriations limit for the twenty four, twenty five school year, uh, and acknowledging, uh, the twenty five, twenty six limit for twenty four, twenty five. It was eighty nine and a half million. Uh, the projected limit is ninety four point three million for twenty five, twenty six. Uh, this is an annual compliance requirement under proposition four, confirming that our appropriations remain within constitutional limits. There is no fiscal impact. It has not changed district revenues or expenditures. Uh, and this year we are within our limits and we're not asking for an increase in the GAN limit. Uh, and we are, uh, we recommend approval of resolution number twelve.
All right, thanks, Rick. I've been a board member for five years and five times I've had to learn what the GAN limit is every year as it comes up because, uh, I, I can never quite remember it, but I got it fresh in my head now. Does anyone have questions or comments? Not this year. Yeah. Um, you'll learn the self-study, you know, it's like I get faster each year. Um, this is an action item as well. Can I get a motion to approve?
Uh, I move to approve resolution number twelve.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor? We are on to thirteen dot three, and this is the adoption of resolution number thirteen, and this is an approval of education code for teaching assignment for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm bringing this ed code to you tonight, a very seasoned teacher, but unfortunately was inadvertently left off the list. So a clerical error in my office, so we apologize for that. Um, the good news is the county blesses, even if the board takes action now. So that's nice. This teacher has had lots of experience teaching this particular subject, so my apologies for that.
No problem. And thanks for the explanation. I was worried that the classroom was like empty or something for the first couple of weeks. So I was glad to hear that it was something, uh, something different. Um, does anyone have questions or comments? No, okay. Uh, we, we've seen this one, the, these kind of resolutions before. Uh, can I get a motion to approve it?
I move we approve it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are on to board and superintendent reports. Uh, would anyone like to start?
Sorry. Uh, last week I visited Hoover with Lupe. Um, it's my first time on campus there and, um, I just want to say that I, I think someone, some trustee mentioned about the warmth of our community. Um, you really feel it at Hoover with, with the staff and, and with the community there for sure. Um, and then we had mid autumn festival at Orion on Friday. Uh, mid autumn was on Monday for us. Um, and we actually had a lot of, uh, outside, uh, community members join this year, more so than previous years, which, which was a nice, nice group there. And then Cecilia and I had a, a meeting with Redwood City together earlier today. Um, they wanted us to just put a little shout out out there. Um, they are having an open house on October twenty first. Um, they're having a photo display. It looks like of historical Redwood City photos, um, at their new offices, um, on Middlefield. And they'll be sending out, I guess, invitations to the community, but they couldn't attend, uh, today.
Most of us attended the reclassification ceremony, which was fantastic. It's one of my favorite parts of doing this job, you know, just congratulating hundreds of kids, large and small for, you know, all the hard work that they and their guardians and their, uh, staff did to go and successfully reclassify as English proficient. So like, that is exactly the sort of thing that we want to be seeing. And just to get that visceral, like fist bump, fist bump, fist bump for all of, uh, those kids was, was really gratifying. So it's great.
Just looking at my list and it's like, oh man, it's been a long time. Um, I went to the DLEC meeting that was at Hoover a couple of weeks ago, which was great, uh, great representation across a number of schools. Um, Hoover, uh, a lot of representation Taft, Kennedy, MIT, Garfield, uh, Ford, a lot of schools. So it was great. Um, there was a great presentation, uh, that Michelle gave, uh, along with Jorge and not, not only the, the big topic was the strategic resource alignment, but also the context behind it on basically school finance. And I was just very impressed with how simplified it was made, like very digestible. Um, I learned things, so that's great. Um, and a lot of great engagement from, from the folks at the meeting. And I think there were some, uh, parents, I think, including Augustine, who spoke up just about the experience of, um, working with or interacting with the board, including at board meetings. So just, again, momentum toward getting, uh, greater engagement, which was nice. Um, also had a policy committee meeting with Wendy and Jolene. Um, so I think you guys may have received an email with many policies, uh, and there are more to come. Uh, but we're doing some legwork now in hopes that, um, you know, eventually the lesson. Also went to the two by two by two, along with, uh, trustee, President Wells and, uh, Superintendent Baker, um, which is always fruitful to hear what's going on with city council and Sequoia Union. Uh, I went to the SMCSBA, the San Mateo County School Board Association's quarterly meeting, um, which was, uh, great. There's, uh, the topic was on immigration, uh, enforcement and responses to that to ensure that we are, uh, protecting our community appropriately. Um, so great to hear about the work that other folks have been doing and things that we might be able to, to learn from. Um, and then also call for support from me on, uh, engaging other trustees across the county in legislative action. So I believe there's momentum, TBD, we'll see. Uh, and then, uh, I, I visited Garfield, um, which is great. Um, Jennifer showed me around. It's always helpful just as an instruction. Um, learning more about the bilingual aspect of the school, which is a very unique, at least to me. I know that there are other schools, uh, in districts that do that, but that is a learning piece for me. Um, but overall, I thought it was a great collaborative environment among staff, um, uh, which is important, uh, especially as we're pushing to keep on, supporting academics and the growth there. Uh, and I've heard that the community grade is great engagement, um, within Garfield. I'm hopeful that we'll continue to get more community engagement across Garfield and the rest of the district, but I think it's a work in progress. Um, but again, a great foundation.
I also attended the San Mateo, um, Schools Board Association with, um, David. And the, um, Spanish superintendent at Garfield, um, it was in Spanish, the committee. Great turnout. By the way, shout out to all the staff at Garfield that made it possible. I know that they were also, um, having a meeting. So apparently those parents might've came in, but it doesn't matter. They were there and they were asking questions, which that is what matters. So I did get up and say, you know, we are here to help you. Please reach out. Um, so hopefully we'll see more, because there was a few people that did say our homework is going to be to bring more people and that's what we've always said. So, um, I was really happy to see the, the big turnout. So. And that's it.
Great. Yeah, mine recovered with the reclassification and two by two by two. The one thing I did want to mention from the two by two by two was that like the Monday prior to the meeting, the city council had done their vision zero, um, meeting, uh, which is, you know, trying to bring down, um, the traffic incidents, uh, with pedestrians. Um, and so number, yeah, number three at the bottom, uh, Redwood City out of fifty cities in the state of comparable size. Uh, so it seems like there's a lot of work. Um, and we, we know it because unfortunately our community has been affected by traffic incidents, um, this year and even last year. Uh, they're very well aware of that, that intersection between Sequoia and our Duane Street campuses, uh, that's there. So, um, you know, we, we, we no longer have our, our safe routes to school advocate on a school board anymore. Um, but it ma- made me think of her and sort of just how important it is to make sure that transportation, pedestrians and, and, and all of that kind of come together for a, for a safe environment there.
Dr. Baker?
Went to several of the, uh, events that you also attended, many of you attended. But Cecilia, one thing on our meeting on Friday, we had, there were thirty parents there and, um, interesting that one of the dads who was there, there were three dads, uh, that were there said, have you ever thought of doing these meetings also maybe in the evening? So in the survey that we put out, probably I guess it was right at the beginning of the school year or at the end of last year, I don't know which. Parents said they want it, and from that survey that they would want it in the morning as they're dropping off their kids. So, and this dad said, well, can you think of maybe doing them in the evening, like at six o'clock? So you'll probably get more parents. So, um, we're going to send out another flyer and, and get some information. Maybe we do one month, one in the morning, the next month it's done in the evening. So we can, you know, accommodate parents. So I thought that was a good point that he brought up. But they, um, had great questions about the budget. And they also brought up about, you know, small schools and small classes. So what's going to happen? And, uh, it was, um, I stated that, you know, it takes a long runway for one to go in that direction of seeing what schools are going to combine, if you're going to close. So nothing would be happening in the twenty six, twenty seven school year. So that kind of think alleviated some of the concerns. Then on Friday, Anna, Catherine and I went to the Stanford Collaborative, which we're involved in with the feeder schools that feed into the Sequoia High School District. And that was our first meeting for the year. So we'll move on with our meetings with math and our duly identified students and see what research is out there that can support us in a different manner for success for our students.
All right. Uh, there is no, next item is information. There's none. Um, correspondence. Did anyone get something they want to formally acknowledge or make part of the official record? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to other business suggested items for future agenda. Um, I did have one request, um, from, uh, a public comment we had about some of our bond spending. It made me think that maybe we should have a, um, like a refresher for the board about, because so many are new too, about the bond program, about what are appropriate bond expenses that GO bond can cover, things like that. I know we have a study session come out, coming up. Maybe we can tack it into that one, um, around that. A separate one? Yeah, just. Beef jam packed. Okay. Yeah. I mean, just somewhere, somewhere along the lines. Um, because there, there are some things that I remember from, I think I, I think I just kind of picked it up along the way. Um, but I don't know how, like what has to, how big of a change order has to come to, um, you know, be an action item versus a consent item. And so some of those, I think, I don't know if which ones are legally required versus board policy ones. So maybe just a refresher of, of, of what, how we're doing the bond program there would be helpful for us. Yeah, okay.
And I, I would love for us just to identify, uh, at what point are, do we have some lighter weight board meetings? I, I, I know it's been difficult to T-shirt size things because sometimes, you know, things get pulled in.
Yeah.
There's going to be a big sprint for the superintendent selection and the like. So it might not be until spring that we get some of the smaller T-shirt sizes.
Spring is a good, is a two, yeah, but. I, I will point out, um, if you look at the future agenda, um, yeah, there, they've been putting, they've been putting a bunch of the, um, yeah, Evelyn and John have been putting in like thirty, like we did the cohesion one, um, last time, uh, and there's one on AI coming up at like a session on it, things like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
She, she's spinning a lot of information that has been asked for and done in a manner of which you were looking at.
Fantastic.
She, uh, contacted individual board members in regard to that. So that's a large presentation. Is that next, next one?
Okay, sweet.
So we have agendas. We go through the.
Things, things are getting placed. Yeah.
Parking lot?
Parking lot.
Yeah.
The parking lot you have, and then also the new document that Evelyn has online.
To schedule the board agenda items. At the bottom, uh, if anyone throws in something that they want to talk about, I'll just usually add it under TBD.
And some of them are already on the count.
Yeah, yeah. And some, yeah, yeah.
Once, yeah, believe the last, last time we talked, last spring and so forth.
Yeah.
They're on there now.
Oh, awesome.
Have to determine as we.
Have to deter, have to determine as we move forward and as other items come with budget and superintendent.
Got to be able to be responsive to that.
We'll have to see, do we pull them off or where do we put them and so forth?
Just the, the, the main point is just that they not get forgotten, but, but I, I'm really happy to hear about this maturation process that's happening. So thank you so much.
Say relatively, and I mentioned this to Dr. Baker earlier today, but I think this was from discussions in one of our prior meetings. I'm trying to put, I'm hoping to add, or I guess propose to the governance handbook, a rough like evergreen calendar of the types of things that we, as the board are expecting to see on what basis. And then we can kind of line up to see, okay, this is generally where we're expecting things. And so there's where here are the general dates where we can expect to see maybe free time. I'd love to get that before the board, just to see it, kind of see if it makes sense. And then at the end of the year, as maybe the part of the board's whole evaluation, whatever process, when we can discuss kind of the big list of priorities and figure out where it makes sense to space things up. But one to preview that I would love to bring to the board for discussion, just this calendar piece of it to add to the.
Okay, on to item eighteen. This is brand new. This came out of our, actually, I don't know how, Evelyn, did you just put this on or did it come from somebody?
Brought to our attention. It was one of those.
One of those items. Did you push for, it was your, it was your action item. So it was your, your item. Okay, cool. So here we are, Board of Trustees Meeting Reflection. You know, it's part of our commitment to continuous improvement. We were looking for a way to sort of get feedback on it. And I think that the one that we'd sort of settled on there, I wasn't sure totally was, let's spend a little bit of time talking about how the meeting went, not necessarily about the content of it. I don't think we can do that because we moved past the agenda item, but the sort of.
The way we discussed.
Yeah. So I was gonna give us a framework to try and fit in, tell me if this works or not, but like one thing that went well and that you think we should keep doing, and one thing that could have gone better. Can we take turns answering that? Is that a fair way to spend this time?
Totally.
I'm going to start with David Weekly.
All right. I got a number of pings from folks that they didn't realize that it was going to be six PM today. And so like tried to get on it at, at seven and we're a little surprised the meeting had already begun. Apparently some people also had issues with the Zoom link. And then I, I would say like one, one, one other thing is like, I would love to get the clock counting up so we know how long we've been spending on a given conversational topic. That'd be, that'd be great. I think what went well is I feel like we had some really good discussions as a board, back and forth and building on each other. In, in, instead of just going A, B, C, D, E, like I think this, 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 we're done. Instead, we, we kind of riffed on each other in the leadership associates a bit and like, and built on each other's points. And I thought that was really great.
Just not to just go and turn, turn here after, after that, Cecilia, please.
Just, this is just a reflection. If you have a comment on what you think went well in this meeting and you think is something that we should continue to do or something that you think maybe we could do this better in the next meeting. How'd the meeting go? Yeah.
I mean, I just, I, I think just overall, I think we're very respectful of each other. And, you know, again, we've said it where we could agree to disagree, but in a respectful way. So I do appreciate that of us. So just like you said it earlier, you know, we're a great board. I, I do appreciate all of you and I've said it before. So let's continue that.
I liked how it was clear to leadership associates and hopefully to whoever else is listening to the board meeting today, our vulnerability in this whole superintendent process. So hopefully it encourages more engagement from the community and whoever else has questions, because you know, we clearly have tons ourselves in this whole process.
I'll, I'll echo what Cecilia mentioned. I, I like that, one, that there, there were disagreements. Like, that's okay. So, but I like that it was respectfully, that we are respectful with each other in doing it. Because we, it does not make sense for us to agree on every single thing. So we need to be vocal because, yeah, that's how we have better outcomes.
Great. I appreciate the early start because it's been a long meeting, but it's still only eight fifteen, which I think is great. And the pacing guide that Evelyn put in, I think we did a great job sticking to it. In fact, we were done with, you know, our, our really long discussion item, you know, about ten, fifteen minutes early. So I think that was good while still having what I thought was deep, meaningful. You know, conversation there. What, what could have gone better? You know, I, I think I appreciated all the stuff that leadership associates has sent us to come in here. I feel like there were a couple of questions that, that we were asked that maybe we could have been better prepared for, or at least I felt like I could have been better prepared for. So you know, now that we've kind of gone through this, I think digging deep into like, what are we supposed to get out of this? What should we come prepared for? I think I might remember to, to ask those questions sometimes more in advance. I do it sometimes when we have discussion items like, hey, what are we trying to do? What's the board's role here to figure this part out? I feel like I could have probably done, dug even another layer deeper on leadership associates of like, what do you want? You know, because it could have gone anywhere from, hey, let's go tailor the survey to, you know, like who, who do you think should be, you know, all of those things. So anyways, I think that could have been a little more of like digging into the next level there. Excellent. Great, great reflection. And let's move on to.
Thank you.
Think of the Board of Trustees Meeting Calendar. Do we have any changes to the calendar?
No changes. Just a reminder, the October sixteenth study session.
Yep. Everybody has, and that's at?
That's going to be here and the, yeah.
Okay, good.
I had a question on that on the.
Yeah, you did. You have childcare.
You have childcare.
It's not confirmed yet.
It's not confirmed yet. So at the study session, I don't, are they going to be making decisions? So you can participate, but it, there's not going to be any decisions made. So if there was a decision made or an action item, you wouldn't be able to vote on it.
Six PM, October sixteenth, here.
Here. From six to eight.
Six to eight. Copy that.
A question on the calendar, the board meeting calendars, the, no change. When we say Evelyn, that there's no changes, that is no changes to what has been uploaded, right? But there could have been changes compared to, I guess, the version of last meeting. Was, is that correct?
Yeah. So this calendar is updated if we made changes before the board meeting, then those would be communicated. Let's say we added a closed session on the eighth. Well, I don't know. Sometime before the twenty second. That change would have been on the agenda memo because our next regular meeting is October twenty second. So that is an example.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Any new changes will be listed on there. Any changes that have already been brought up will not be on there. That makes sense.
Sorry. Yeah, it does. It does. I was looking at the wrong attachment. I, I meant this for a previous item. The, the other business suggested items for future done agenda, that, that, sorry, is it okay if I go back?
Do you adjourn?
We haven't adjourned. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
The, 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 the schedule for the board agenda, and this is the discussion about things that have been added. Is there any way to see like a, a red line of what had, what has changed from the last version, like each time?
Yeah, I can either use bold font or something so that you can see the changes, just like I do with the meeting calendar, or do you want red font? Is that your suggestion? Whatever you want to do, I can make those changes visible.
Whatever's the easiest for you to do. Yeah, if there's just any way, because I, I have not been as on top of it of checking the differences, but now that I know that there are things that have changed, I will pay more attention.
Yeah.
And there's also a budget committee meeting on the fourteenth, right?
Correct, but that is not a board meeting.
Correct.
That's a committee meeting.
That's a superintendent committee meeting. All right. Item twenty, it's adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.